Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. We're going to begin momentarily. I just want to let you know that tonight's public hearing will be recorded.
All the meeting to order, if you'd all stand and join me in the pre-plead of the ceremony. My little agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. And good evening, everyone. I'm going to go over some leading guidelines for everyone. The main purpose of this meeting is to obtain citizen input regarding the future of Morrison County Auditor Treasurer position. The position is currently held by an appointed interim auditor treasurer, and based on state statute, the county board has the option to keep the position elected or to convert it to an appointed position. To facilitate the process and to make sure that everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so, the commissioners ask that following rules be followed. And these will be the rules of order. Number one, if you wish to speak, raise your hand or stand after the chairperson, that's me, recognizes you. You may move to the microphone. The microphone's right there, and you need to speak into the microphone. Number two, all persons wishing to be heard must come to the microphone. They must give their complete name and address. The board asks that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. After three minutes, the board chair will ask you to wrap up, bring your comments to a close. If the views of a group are being expressed, one spokesperson is asked to speak as the group representative. Number three, all comments must address the county board, and all questions must be directed to the board chair. Speakers may use specific examples to illustrate their point of view, but without an opportunity to review all information, staff may not be prepared to answer all questions. Number five, questions or comments from the audience are not allowed without having been acknowledged by the board chair. Number six, the board reserves the right to question any speaker regarding their comments. The board also reserves the right to question staff regarding any comments made at the hearing. Number seven, at the conclusion of all testimony, the public hearing comment period will close. These guidelines are intended to outline the process, preserve the order, and give everyone the opportunity to speak. The commissioners ask that the opinions of everyone be treated with respect. No interruptions, please. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to do so. Only testimony or questions relating to the relevant topic will be discussed. All other comments will be referred to the appropriate agency or department. I will now ask the county administrator to fill us in on where the county has been and what actions have transpired to bring us to where we are today. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And ladies and gentlemen, to catch us up where we are before you, there was a handout outside the room. It's also up on the slide into the screen to your left. August 16th of 2022, our incumbent or serving auditor treasurer, Chelsea Robinson, announced her resignation. On September 16th, a month later, was her last day in office. The following Monday, on September 19th, an interim auditor treasurer was appointed. On November 9th, a primary election was held, and Robinson won with 11,457 votes. On December 9th, the county received a declination letter from the auditor treasurer elect. On January 3rd, the elected officials of the county were sworn in, and the auditor treasurer elect was absent. And that brings us to where we are today, the public hearing, January 17th of 2023. That public hearing is shown by a white star, and I'll refer to that here on the subsequent slides. And again, today's purpose is to obtain input from the residents of Morrison County regarding the future of the auditor treasurer position. Senate File 1731, House File 968 allow the elected county board to start a public process to appoint the auditor treasurer. Again, that white star you can see on the left is a depiction from the Association of Minnesota Counties that shows the process. And the process, as we begin, is a vacancy in office and public notice, which has occurred over the last two weeks. Here we are on step two, the public testimony, again where the star's at, where a public hearing is held to take testimony. As I've been discussing with Morrison County Record as well as K L T F through my efforts to gain benefits of both an elected and benefits of an appointed auditor treasurer, I've met with many people of note. I met with a former auditor treasurer that served in position for 28 years. Of note, I met with Ms. Robinson prior to her resignation. Of note, I've met with several township supervisors and leaderships throughout the community. Benefits of elected mentioned to me was historical significance. As I could find in statute, this was established in 1918, and the idea of this is how it's always been done. It was also mentioned there was the ability to define proper directives, meaning that that elected auditor treasurer, if directed to do something and didn't follow the board's direction, was preserved and could not be removed during the term. I recently heard the idea of if it's not elected, then you must be hiding something. That was mentioned to me by a township supervisor this past week. And the last benefit that I've been able to put together is a balance of power representing the people's vote in an elected position. The benefits of it being appointed, specifically, the first one is the ability to require technical qualifications. In an elected position, there's no requirement not to run for office. Specifically, I would offer in the financial area. The second is job or position security, meaning that you don't have to compete or campaign for your position every four years. The third bullet is a greater oversight by the board as well as greater accountability in the execution of the day-to-day responsibilities. Referring to that if the person in the position, if it's appointed, is underperforming, they can be addressed, up to and including termination. The ability to replace if underperforming, as I just discussed, without having to wait for the end of a term. And the second to the last bullet here, this recent election, as was highlighted to me, because Ms. Robinson was on the ballot, her ability to participate in the election process was limited. She was able to conduct trainings prior to the election period, but during the election itself, she was not able to be as involved. And again, she had left by that point, but she had conveyed that to me. And the last is one that somebody had mentioned to me, you don't have to spend money to keep your job. And again, that's referring to campaigning. This next slide, I keep the same chart on the left, again, provided by AMC. There's the white star annotating our second step, and I listed some facts. Again, this is allowable by Senate File 1731, House File 968. In Minnesota, of the 87 counties, 54 of them have serving elected auditor treasurers, and 33 are appointed. Most recently, in January, at the beginning of January, Ranville County is going to an appointed auditor treasurer. And from the Morrison County website, the significant responsibilities of the auditor treasurer's actual in the office is the management of the investments to include a checking account, the chief election official for the county, election administration, significant role in the taxes and delinquent tax process for the county, as well as maintaining forfeiture and property transfers. And my last slide now shows us again where we're at, the white star. So if you pick it up from here, gentlemen, Mr. Chair, what I'm trying to show is what I would refer to as branches and sequels. And what I want to ensure that's highlighted is that if, in fact, the board would go to an appointed route, there are several ways of which the board can leave that path. But if the board goes the appointed, if they determine that they would like to pursue an appointed position, then that decision goes to the board. In order for that decision to pass, it must receive a supermajority vote. That's four out of the five commissioners must vote in favor. If within 30 days, a public petition is received, and 10% of our registered voters sign the position, it would revert back to an appointed position. If the county board does appoint the position, after three years of that position being appointed, the board can take action to revert it back to an elected position, or the public can submit a reverse referendum that also could initiate the position reverting back to an elected position. If the county board chooses to maintain it as an elected position, we would maintain an appointed auditor treasurer, not necessarily the one that is currently appointed, but we would have to maintain an appointed auditor treasurer for the duration of the four-year term that began this past January. And then in the 2026 election, there would be another election for an elected auditor treasurer to take office in 2027. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. Questions from the board? I would like to remind everybody, and I don't have to remind you what you're here for because you heard it very clearly. I would like to just simply say we are here for public comment. We're not here for a debate. You can sit right up here if you want to. This is not a debate. It is public comment. And at this time, I will open this meeting for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment that they would like? John?
Yeah, I'll wait till he's finished.
He's finished?
My name is John Alrick. I live at 378 4473 Street, Newman, Minnesota. I live in Lake and Township, the southeast corner of Morrison County. I prepared a written statement to read into the record, and I made copies for the commissioners. And this is my statement. I'm going to rephrase one sentence because I should have added another word into it. After I reviewed Minnesota statute, I came up with a list of pros and cons as follows. There is a need for a short-term appointee. However, the appointee should not be for a complete four-year term. My idea for that is, in the statutes, they were talking about incapacitations. Somebody gets sick, somebody dies, or gets killed in a car accident, you can appoint somebody for. They didn't even have numbers in there, but I was thinking like the second 50% of a term. But when it's a whole term, it needs to be looked at a little bit different. An appointee is an employee of the county, and it would most likely fall under some type of annual performance review and would be subject to removal if performance is not met to the standard of the appointee's manager. The performance measures could put undue stress on the job performance. Having an appointee for the complete term of office could cause immunity questions and distrust from the constituents. And this is where I'm going to reword my sentence. We don't want to create an appearance of having a fox in the hen house. And you guys have to deal with that stuff all the time, so you know exactly what I'm talking about. By having a special election and electing somebody, your appointee probably would get elected because maybe nobody would sign up for it, but it changes the legality of the position. Minnesota statute states the elected official is due to separation of powers to the branches of government. The office is the accountability of our county government. We, the people, do not want to put a fox in a hen house. Your county administrator mentioned that as far as the separation of power. The statute, after I reviewed it, it needs to be maybe amended at the Capitol to state the time period. If there's 50% of the term left or a year of the term left, it would be socially probably acceptable to appoint somebody to that position without a special election. And then that person would have to run for that position at the time of the next election cycle. So, I, John Alrick, a voting constituent of Morrison County, Minnesota, recommend to the board of commissioners temporarily have your appointee uphold a special election for the elected position within 60 days. I think you had tabulated 30 days. I use 60 days, but that's kind of a norm for other branches of government. And that's all I have to say. Any questions you might have?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else you would like?
Can I ask Matt a question?
Sure, absolutely, please.
Does the statute state that the appointee would finish the term of the current?
It does, Mr. Chair. 375.08, it reads, "The person appointed shall give the bond and take the oath required by law and serve the remainder of the term and until the successor qualifies."
Thanks. Thank you. Forgive me, folks. I do not know everyone's first name. Jim, please.
My name is James Meyer, 299 4th Street, I mean, 299 83rd Street. Pierce, Minnesota, 56364. I'm in Buckman Township, and thank you. Good evening. I would like to say that for the comment that this is interesting. Under state statute 200, we have a voting change. You're going to elect or appoint. That's a change, so that should have the public hearing once you're doing, and publication, and comment time. I appreciate that. Thank you. On the other side, you're having qualifications. I looked over your pamphlet here. And when you ask for qualifications to be appointed to do the job, the county commissioners really never had a qualification posting put before before, so at some point, I would assume that we'll see the qualifications so that the people know what qualifications are to be a county commissioner, so the people can make that choice. Secondly, I think that the, under the general election, the procedure you're doing should call for a special election now, which you could do, and you could put it before the voters. And that's what we're, would be a proper method because we're changing the voting thing. And the people should be aware that this is an actual change in voting rights. The reason why I am in support of an appointed, no, an elected official is because it gives the people somebody to actually point at and say, you're responsible, that we can change you, as we can change the commissioners. We can change you, and that's important. They don't have to need to know how to bake the pie to understand that there's people there that can bake, that can do the dough, the painting, the apple, gather all this into the bundle, which you guys look at and say, yeah, I'll vote on that, or I won't vote on that. So there, essentially, we have governance. The people actually own the head of that department, so to speak. Secondly, let's see. I think that we should just put this in the perspective of allowing the govern, govern, the government. And if you start appointing, we're getting just top heavy with the appointees. And yes, you can fire them, whereas with the other ones, you need a special reason to unelect them. But here, we have the power, and if you And if you're taking it away from us to appoint them, what gives you the right to make the decision? Not the fact that you know better, but the fact that you say, I was elected by the people and they can get me out if they want me out. That is something which I don't like hearing. I would rather have where we can bargain this process. Put your, everything in perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Young lady, to the right there. And again, forgive me, I do not know everyone's name. You're late. Sorry, please, you, yes.
I actually had a question. So, in the beginning, we were talking about how there's a Minnesota state statute saying that we can reverse or turn back from being an appointee for an elected position. Do you know what that Minnesota state statute is?
No, I don't, just for the but I think we might.
Mr. Chair, I think you'll find that in three seventy-five point eight.
Or we simply could have asked.
So it was three seventy-five?
I'm sure.
Zero eight.
So I'm in favor of keeping our elections fair enough, and I believe that giving the people the power shows that you know, we have a, we have a voice as community members here. We see a lot of problems with the appointees and stuff like that because then we get into the back of nepotism where it just gets handed to our friends, they're not giving a job, we're not accountable. I'm just saying, going off the campaigning, Chelsea Robinson did not even campaign, she still won. It showed that obviously people in the community liked her, but she must have done her job well. You don't have to spend a lot of money to know that you're doing your job correctly. And I just think that, exactly what Jim said, that we should definitely give the power to the people and hold our elected representatives accountable of, you know, we don't like their job, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very, very kind of cast. And Jeremy, right? Okay, thank you. Jeremy, you'd be next.
Good evening. Thank you. Jeremy Pacula, five oh two Fifth Street, Selby's, number two. I don't have too much more to add on this other than this needs to stay as an elected position coming forward and two thousand twenty-six, even if we continue on with the appointed individuals that have taken this responsibility and I do applaud them for taking office when this situation took place last summer. They did well as far as I'm concerned. But we can't go down this road of permanent appointees of positions, especially this one. It is my belief that many of my circle would believe that this is an pathetic move by Secretaries Steve Simon to, one by one, county by county, take this position right here permanently and appoint one. The auditor position within our county is the chief election official in our county. And that is our only voice of we, the people in this country. This country is founded as a constitutionally public. And as long as we have so-called free and fair elections, that is the way it's designed. If I take this position away and making it permanently appointed would be a great mistake for this county and people of this of our residents, we will have lost control of that particular course part of what the Constitution gives us. So, I'm in favor of continuing with the appointed, the people that have any place, but I believe this needs to favor the elected position going forward coming up in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Jeremy. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Please go ahead.
Roman Wodok, eleven four thirty-two, one hundred and sixty Fifth Street, Little Falls, Minnesota, Mike Greg Towns. Main perception that the public has, the county auditor's job is to independently or checks the imbalance of the company. That's a public perception. There's added heels on it within the, on the attitude. In the public perception, if you go to appoint it, is this. You appoint that county auditor. I, I haven't mentioned some names, but I don't want to offend anybody. Didn't say they're crooked or whatever. But they have to go to Mr. Blah, say, we got a, we got a complaint that there's a little double dipping going on. That county auditor, if he's appointed, got to clear a path Mr. Blah, because he's a boss. That auditor cannot operate independently with a boss above him, entered in state statute. And if you have an election complaint, we have Secretary of State who runs the likes to the state of Minnesota. And I talked to Mr. Blah and he said, well, he can't run the election. I say that's false. We have a state auditor, state secretary of state that elected, that runs the elections. State, if he's running for office, he runs a clean election with very little or no fraud. So that can be done with an elected position. Next position I heard is is, I talked to the county commissioner told me this year, if we must put it up for a vote, we're going to have some right-wingers, there's some crazies out there running, how are we going to control it? There's reasonable qualifications for the job that you need to qualify for the job with the selected. And the second thing, if we do get somebody that ain't doing their job, who's have the power to remove them? Just like you have the power to remove appointed physician. In the past, eight, nine years ago, that's a double dipping going on by a county commissioner. And that was I was told was caught by the county auditor. In that case, commissioner was already requested to pay the money back, which double dips on sodium. Some of you are familiar with it. Wasn't prosecuted, it was happened to individuals, this audience would have been double dipping. They had been caught, got fined and went to jail. Cannot have a boss over a county auditor who made jobs to protect his balance and for county operations, spending and funding. Must be independent. Has there been, where did this proposal come from? Was there steady commission form or just somebody's idea that popped in their head, we want to, we want to combine them? Or was just what's Mr. Blah's idea, Mike Lane's idea? Bring forward without a steady commission because takes that's pretty clear, that's, you know, five percent of vote and possibly a steady commission. If it's steady commission, you got different processes to go through with it. I'm not clear exactly how that runs because it's kind of complicated to me. But I'd like to know who brought up this proposal?
I can, I will say, it was brought up because Chelsea didn't accept her election victory. That's how, Chelsea Robinson didn't accept her election victory.
Yeah. Who brought up the position?
We're bringing this before you
State should have a special election, who brought up the
There is no special election, because, because there's no special election allowed for that position. The person that we appoint, if we, like, let's say our
You can put it temporary, then you got to have a special election.
Yeah, no special election. They have finished the term and then there's the election in two thousand twenty-six, the next election would be
Anyway, that's my opinion. I didn't do the checks and balances. And I don't want to call anybody a crook or anything like that there, but it's a public perception. If if you have everybody in house and has to report to their boss, there's good, and you can see that the commission, light rail commission in the cities, and all that, we're all in a point position. And they have one boss on the top and no accountability, it just doesn't work.
Thank you, Roman. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, sorry, as he makes his way to the podium, I just remind the board that every year we're audited by the state of Minnesota.
We are, thank you.
Dan Chilling, Little Falls resident, four oh nine first half in Northwest of Minnesota, five six three four five. His elected, elected office is a position of duty. As an elected official, it is a reflection of the citizens who elect them, the same constituents who elected all of you as commissioners. As our elected commissioners, you're responsible for the people of Morrison County. Change the auditor treasurer position to elected, to appointed is to rob his constituents of their constitutional right. I respectfully implore you, Mr. Chair and the commissioners, to keep our people in their rightful, in their hands. I'm in favor of keeping the auditor treasurer position an elected position. And I'm also in favor of you as our commissioners, our elected representatives, holding a vote to in fact call for a special election and hold it so that we can maintain our rights as citizens.
Thank you very much, Dan. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Yes, Matt?
My name is Renee Crowe, date three three twenty-one, balcony row, Spalding. And I just like what everyone else said. I think this should remain elected and not appointed. And like I said, what everyone else said was really good, so.
Thank you, Renee. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Well, you all know I have to ask this three times. Oh, excuse me, Russ.
Morning, Russ.
Good evening, good evening, Russ.
Snigman, eighty-seven thirty-five, three hundred and forty-three, pushing Minnesota.
Russ, you're a little taller than everybody. Why don't you pull that microphone? There you go, thank you.
Better?
A little bit.
All right. Our government, every level in the nation, has an elective checks and balance. We have it here. It's worth as you can see, not too recently, it appears that the public wasn't happy with someone that had it. And within the four years, after the four years, was replaced. So, I'm a strong believer in elected form of government. And in my fortieth year being elected right now, I've got twelve years on a town board and twenty-eight years of county. So, you might call me a little partial, but I appreciate keeping it a while.
Thank you, Russ. Anyone else that would like to make public comments? Anyone else that would like to make a comment?
What, Lord, do you think applying the votes, if they don't yet have been said yet?
No, do not have it.
Don't have it said yet?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else that would like to make a public comment? I'm going to ask for the third or actually fourth time. Anyone else like to come up and make a public comment regarding the auditor position that we're talking about? For or against, good or bad, right, wrong, to make any difference? Hearing nothing from anyone, public comment period will close. I will look to the board. If the board has any questions, concerns, comments, if anyone would like to give.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I just would like to state that there were no received mail-in or written comments, electronic or otherwise.
Thank you very much, Matt. I missed that. And for everybody's knowledge, I've got it right here. Mailed in written comments read into the record. Thank you. There were none. Anything from the board? Hearing none, ladies and gentlemen, at six thirty-four, this public hearing is closed. Thank you for attending. Good job, Mr. Chair.